All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, March 8th, 2021 City of Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting in order. At this time, I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. And I would ask Karen Fandora, Commission Liaison, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Planning Commissioner Laquisha Beal.
Planning Commissioner Laquisha Beal, aye, present.
Commissioner Byron Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff here.
Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt is absent this evening. Commissioner Lynn Banks.
Commissioner Lynn Banks, present.
Commissioner Ken Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips here, present.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, present.
Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Travis Graham, present.
Commissioner Susan Stokemary.
Commissioner Susan Stokemary, present.
Commissioner Ashley Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, here.
Commissioner Tom Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr is here.
Chair Sanderson, Chad Sanderson.
Chair Chad Sanderson is here.
Okay. Also present this evening is Mike Mallon, Director of Community Development, Matt Wright, Assistant Director of Community Development, Nathan Jury, Senior Planner, Adam Hilgadick, City Engineer, Jackie Summer, City Attorney, Jerry Kahler, Council Member District One, Mayor Pro Tem, and Jim Lee Cock, our Public Stenographer.
All right, thank you, Chair. So we have a public hearing tonight, so I'm going to read through the procedure for public hearings and then the agenda items. So for public hearings, I'm going to open the public hearing and call for exhibits from our city attorney. The staff will make their presentation. If the applicant would like to do so, they can make a presentation as well. We'll hear from witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed, some general questions and discussion, and then close the public hearing and entertain a motion. On the agenda tonight is the call to order in the consent agenda. Item two is a public hearing, conditional use permit with alternate development standards, CUP 0121-7643 for Phillips 66. Item three is a public hearing rezoning, RZ 0221-7659 for Proverbs Estates. And item four, public hearing plan, development concept plan, PDC 0221-7661, Proverbs Estates. Both item three and four have been asked to be continued to Monday, March 22nd. Item five is a site plan design review, SPDR 0121-7644, Phillips 66. Item six is other business, and seven is a German. So I'd ask for, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda. Commissioner Peel.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the meeting, Planning Commission meeting minutes from February 22nd be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Phillips.
This is Commissioner Phillips. I second the motion.
All right, this will be a roll call vote. Thank you.
Okay, I've noticed that we have some background noise. If you could please mute your device until called upon. If you're on a cell phone, just click the mute function. If you're on a landline, just click star six to mute your phone. Okay. I think Commissioner Cradoff.
I think Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokemary.
Commissioner Stokemary, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Beal.
Commissioner Laquisha Beal, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is items two and five, the conditional use permit with alternative development standards and site plan design review for Phillips 66. We'll hear both items together and then vote on them separately. I will now open the public hearing for the conditional use permit and call for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 6, 2021, and February 20, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners on February 8, 2021, and February 22, 2021. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Thank you. And Mr. Jury, I believe you'll be presenting for the city.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson and Planning Commissioners. For today, a public hearing is being held at the request of the applicant, Stephen Maslin, on behalf of the property owner, Sun Enterprises LLC, to approve a conditional use, or CUP, with alternative development standards to legally allow the general service station or gas station use. And also to allow, or to approve a site plan design review application for the proposed building and site improvements on a property addressed at 1801 Northwest 7 Highway. As you can see in this aerial here, it's generally located at the northwest corner of 7 Highway and Duncan Road. Currently, the existing Phillips 66 gas station and convenience store on the property is a legal non-conforming use because its existence predates the current CUP requirement for gas stations. So now, a CUP is required at this time since the applicant is requesting to expand their existing legal non-conforming business. The property is zoned GB, or general business. The general service station use does require a CUP in the underlying zoning district. As this property is surrounded by commercial development and the same zoning to the north and the west, and also the arterial and collector roads to the east and south, staff does believe that the proposed and existing general service station use, for that matter, is appropriate at this location and thus recommends approval of the conditional use permit. As far as the site plan design review, as well as the alternative development standard requested, the, if I can scroll down to that, site plan that they're proposing. Currently, an 1,800-square-foot convenience store and an eight-pump gas station island exist on the roughly .9-acre property. The original car wash located to the north has already been demolished. The applicant intends to construct roughly 2,300-square-foot addition to the rear of the existing building. But no changes are proposed to the gas pumps. The final building will be roughly 4,100 square feet in area with a proposed setback of, rear setback of 19 feet, just a hair over 19 feet. The addition will encroach on the required 25-foot setback for a general commercial building by six feet. And the applicant does request approval of alternative development standards to reduce this rear setback requirement to 19 feet to accommodate their proposed addition. Staff does believe this is, this is a minimal request since the pad-site building, which is a different type of building allowed, also allowed on this property than the proposed general commercial building. But a pad-site building on this property only would require a 20-foot rear setback if it met all pad-site requirements. The one-foot reduction between the 20-foot rear and the 19-foot proposed rear setback of a pad-site building is a minor reduction that staff believes will not impact the adjacent parking lot on the property directly to the west. The proposed building, scroll to those elevations. The proposed building is an improvement over the existing. The building facade will be composed of brick, stucco, brick mainly on the corners and short wainscoting along the base of the building, as well as stucco filling in everything between those, and the windows and door glazing as well. The roof parapet, as proposed, will help actually reduce visibility of the existing and proposed rooftop equipment on this building. This proposal is a major addition that more than doubles the existing square footage of the building, the existing building. So as a major addition, all site improvements such as parking, lighting, and landscaping must come into conformance with today's code. The proposed parking complies with current code. Existing lighting with the addition of the new building-mounted light should comply as well with the current code. However, on the landscape plan, the existing trees, as shown, did not include the diameter of the tree trunk. So staff can't determine if the landscape does or does not meet code at this time. This was not provided by the applicant in time to make changes before this meeting. So staff does recommend that prior to building permit issuance, landscape plan must be approved by staff that meets code. Additionally, the existing pole sign at the corner of 7 and Duncan must be removed as part of any major addition project. The applicant has proposed removal of the existing pole sign. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the CUP request with two conditions and approval of the site plan design review with four conditions, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Are there any questions for staff by the commissioners at this time? Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Jury, I wanted to ask you, I noticed, and I may have missed it, but in the requirements, a minimum of one bicycle parking spot. And I noticed in the text you had put in there that that would be required to be put in, but it's, as far as I can see, it's not a condition. Would it be better to put that as a condition than rather just in the text?
I believe my condition was just a blanket that it must meet code for parking. Let me scroll up to those conditions. So, under, prior to building, condition number three, under the site plan design review, prior to building permit issuance, the plans must meet all code requirements, or plans that meet all code requirements must be submitted. This includes, but not limited to, bicycle parking, frontage landscaping, and lighting. So I believe that condition did cover that.
Okay. I missed that part of it. Thank you, Mr. Jury. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Banks, did you have an additional question?
I think that was my question, so that was covered. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Commissioner Peel.
Sorry, Chair. Yes, I have one other question. None of the gas pumps are being moved, is that correct? And no additions?
Correct. All existing pumps and canopy will remain as is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jury. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the commissioners at this time before we move the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jury. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? And if they would, they'll need to be, state their name and address and be sworn in. Mr. Maslin, is that how you pronounce your name?
Yeah, it's me. Yeah. Mr. Maslin, Mr. Maslin, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case to be the truth. So what have you got?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I need your name and address.
My name is Stephen Maslin. My address is 811 Pasail, Suite 201, Kansas City, Missouri, 64131.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Maslin, if you have anything additionally you'd like to state to the commission, feel free to do so.
Well, I agree with Mr. Jury about all landscaping and all lighting. We don't have a problem with that, and creating a bicycle station, I think, is a good thing for this store. So I mean, we're ready and able to accommodate all the comments that Nathan made.
Very good. Does any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Peel.
Thank you, Chair. I just, instead of a question, I just wanted to make a remark or a comment. I think that's going to be, be a good thing for that piece of property there to upgrade it and do some, some better things to it. So I just wanted to thank the design and the things that are being made to that property.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant at this time? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Maslin. At, at this time, I would ask if there's any witnesses in favor of this application? And I'd ask if there's any witnesses in opposition to this application? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask if there's any other final questions or comments at this time from the commissioners? All right. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion for the conditional use permit with additional, or the alternative design standards. Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the public hearing conditional use permit with alternative development standard, CUP dash 01 dash 21 dash 7643 for Phillips 66 with the two staff conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Have a motion. And Commissioner Peel.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I second the motion from Commissioner Banks.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Ken Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokemary.
Commissioner Stokemary, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Hose, aye.
Commissioner Beal.
Commissioner Beal, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. So the conditional use will be heard at the city council at their Monday, March 15th, 2021 meeting at 6:00 PM. Now entertain a motion for the site plan and design review. Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move that the site plan design review, SPDR with the four conditions for Phillips 66 be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Banks.
Yes, I'd like to also second Commissioner Peel's motion.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokemary.
Commissioner Stokemary, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Hose, aye.
Commissioner Beal.
Commissioner Beal, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
That motion is carried unanimously.
All right. So this is all the testimony to be heard on these items. If you would like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you very much. All right. So the next items are items three and four, and the applicant would like to continue these to the Monday, March 22nd, 2021 Planning Commission Agenda meeting. I would ask for a motion to continue these items. Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion. Item three, the public hearing rezoning, RZ dash 02 dash 21 dash 7659, the Proverbs Estates. The applicant has requested that to be continued to Monday, the 22nd. And also, item four, the public hearing, the planned development concept plan, PDC dash 02 dash 21 dash 7661, the Proverbs Estate. Also, the applicant would like that also continued to Monday, March 22nd.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Have a motion. And Commissioner Peel.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to second the two motions that Commissioner Banks put forth on the rezoning and the planned development concept plan for Proverbs Estates.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
All right. Planning Commissioner Susan Stokemary.
Commissioner Stokemary, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Hose, aye.
Commissioner Beal.
Commissioner Beal, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. So that brings us to other business. Mr. Wright?
Yep, thank you, Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. The 2020 Annual Report was included in the agenda packet this evening. The Annual Report is a comprehensive list of all the planning applications that were submitted for review and consideration during the calendar year with descriptions of each of those projects. Other planning permitting and development applications are also included for reference. Some of those may be boards and commissions that refer projects to the Planning Commission, as well as other projects, or boards or commissions that are related to the development process that may act independently of the Planning Commission. On the screen is kind of the annual summary of the applications that were heard by the Planning Commission. There were a total of 102 applications submitted for review. I believe I calculated 96 of those that were actually brought before the Planning Commission. The other six applications were either, were withdrawn prior to Planning Commission review and consideration. Rezonings were the most common application type with 18 applications, followed by plats, including preliminary plats at 15 and then final plats at 13. There were also a number of concept plans that were approved during 2020, as well as the inclusion of the new general development plan type, which was approved, I think, went into effect in June of 2020. And during that time, between June and the end of the year, there were five of those applications that were reviewed by the Planning Commission. Overall, the total number of applications increased from 2019 from 84 to 102. Just a quick recap of some of the other applications that were reviewed by other boards and commissions. Generally, applications held steady, or in some cases, for some of the other boards, there was a decrease in the total number of applications. Some of that was due to recent code changes over the past year or two, such as variances. There were a number of applications that used to go through the Board of Adjustment for minor code deviations as a part of redevelopment projects. However, in 2019, we adopted alternative development standards, much like the Phillips 66 that went through the process tonight. Previously, that would have required a separate approval by the Board of Adjustment, but we are able to now accomplish that through the site plan or the conditional use permit process, which helps streamline the development process for those types of redevelopment and infill projects. On administrative applications, most processes remain steady in the number of applications that were received. The only administrative approval where there was a noticeable decline was in signed permits issued. There was a drop from 178 to 160. That can also be attributed to some changes with the new sign code, particularly when it comes to temporary, temporary event permits. Previously, any temporary vendor required a signed permit. However, we have set a cap that signs under 32 square feet no longer require that approval. So that is, that is likely the primary reason for the decline in signed permits in 2020. Building permits, we had another records year in building permits up to a new record of 1,425 permits issued in 2020. That is a number that has increased every year since 2014. And then for building permits, or sorry, residential permits in terms of new dwelling units, another milestone, we had 560 new residential dwellings added last year. That was a 29-year high. We haven't had that many permits or dwelling units added since 1991, when there were over 600 units added in 1991. 262 of those were single-family units. 148 were two-family units, and then the remaining 150 were multi-family units. And then also, in the, the Annual Report includes a map, just to kind of pinpoint where most of those residential dwelling units were permitted. Most of them, of course, are in the south, south side of Blue Springs, which is where there is land availability for new subdivisions. And most of the new home permits were issued in Chapman Farms, Colonial Highlands, and Eagles Ridge. And then for commercial, the commercial, major commercial product, projects were primarily along the I-70 corridor, as well as the central part of the 7 Highway corridor, generally between Duncan and Moreland School Road in the center of the city. I'd like to thank Derek Bright, one of our new associate planners, who put the Annual Report together. And then big thanks to the Planning Commissioners for all of their, all of your efforts and flexibilities in 2020 to continue making development move forward in Blue Springs. And then lastly, a quick February development report. There were 11 single-family homes permitted and seven, two-family permits issued, which accounted for 14 duplex units. And then 85 total building permits, which brings the year-to-date total to 188, and two signed permits committed. And I will be happy to answer any questions of any of the commissioners that they may have either on the 2020 Annual Report or the development report for February.
Any questions from the commissioners? Any questions, questions from the commissioners for Mr. Wright? Okay, yeah, it's pretty, I guess, just pretty impressive how much got done last year, considering so. Great work by all. Oh, Mr., all of them, all right, Commissioner Banks.
This isn't a question, but I would like to compliment staff because I know as planning commissioners, you make it so easy for us. And with everything that you've done, and along with the COVID, you've done a tremendous job to all of you. So I want to just think, everybody should say thank you because I know you've done a tremendous amount of work. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate that, and thank you to all the commissioners.
Thanks for all the hard work, and the report looks wonderful. Thank you.
All right, and any comments on the March 22nd meeting? Anything to add there, just that we are having a meeting? We have a...
Yes, we will have a meeting on Monday, March 22nd, including for the project that was continued, but we also have some additional projects to bring forward that evening.
All right, does the, any other commissioners have any other business? Okay, so hearing none, I will ask for a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Banks.
I guess, I guess I'm isolated, so I get to talk a lot. Thank you, Chair. I make a motion that we adjourn, and all of you have a good night.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Veal. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so we are adjourned. Please immediately hang up by clicking the red phone icon. Thank you very much. Have a good night.